Welcome to the Commercial Real Estate Podcast powered by First National. I am Adam Poetic with Aaron Cameron at the Apartment Development and Affordable Housing Conference, part of a three-day conference run that Aaron and I are doing here. We have a guest on, an advocate for city building, which you may not find always in his role. So it's a refreshing take for the development community. We have Brad Bradford, City Counselor for Beaches East York. Welcome, Brad.
Good to be here with you.
We've asked 40 or so politicians to come on the podcast. You're the first to ever say yes.
Active sitting politicians. We've had past politicians on, but active sitting. So thank you.
Is that us problem or are you problem?
Good question. I don't know.
I think maybe they're worried about the hot seat. I don't know. It's, yeah, but I think that we probably share aligned views on what we need for the city. So no hot seat today.
You know, I'm curious, Brad, just before we get into the topics, why don't we just talk about your history? How did you end up in politics and what was your path to get there?
I'm an urban planner by training. I started my, my career after grad school at a consulting firm here in Toronto, working on projects across the country, mainly transit projects, which was really interesting. Went down to Boston, Massachusetts, did some renewable energy policy, and then came back to the city of Toronto in the chief planner's office, working for one of your other guests, Jennifer Keesmat. And that was my first exposure to both local government and the politics and the big bureaucracy at City Hall. Did my time there for three years and it was a very frustrating experience for a bunch of different reasons. But, you know, over that sort of 36-month period, that frustration about the future arc of the city sort of boiled over. And I said, you know, when I'm going to stop complaining about a, you know, the middle management with no direct reports that I, role that I occupied at the city of Toronto, and I got to put my hand up and try and make it better in my community. And so I ran for council in 2018, was elected, and I've been there for the past six years, kind of swinging with both arms, trying to push the housing power.
Do you ever want to be a politician before that moment of frustration?
Most people just leave politics for some private sector. You decided to try and change it.
Yeah, so not at all. Like, I was raised by a single mom who raised three of us. And now that I have two young ones, it sort of blows my mind that she was able to do that. But we were not a political family, never had a lawn sign. There was like dinner table political conversations because the government of the day may or may not have had an impact on our lives, but not particularly political. And I didn't even know anything about like council or local government stuff, which is, I think, representative of a lot of people. When you think about politics, you know, you're inclined to focus on the feds, maybe the province. Nobody thinks about City Hall, and yet that is the sort of book of business that impacts your day-to-day lives, everything from, you know, the Hunger Games to get your kids in swimming lessons, or Main Street, small businesses.
Which was this morning, by the way.
That's right. That's why it's top of mind for me too, because I'm lining up and queuing as well. You know, transit, garbage, whatever, like, these are the issues that make an impact on your day-to-day lives. But for whatever reason, when it comes to politics, we sort of focus on the big show in Ottawa, but where the real action is at City Hall in the clamshell.
And nobody should care more than the local government about the local city. It follows that the decision-making should come from here.
I think that's right. Yeah, like, local government is best positioned to lead on that. And it's, it's important because, again, whether or not people know who their councillor is, or the mayor, or what's going on, they will have an opinion on housing. They will have an opinion on transit, congestion, traffic, vacancies with small business.
Real estate, weather, and traffic. That's their Torontonian sort of three-pack. You can spend an hour with anybody in the city, just talking about those three things. Can I set the framework for the conversation? I think that that's useful. We talked before we go live, we do this with all guests, it's just we ask for no-fly zones, and you gave us no, no-fly zones. And so I'll set the framework, and then we can...
Or no holds barred.
Yeah, and this is, this is, this is just transparency and honesty. So, and to be fair, we just had Jennifer Keesmat on. So I think for our listeners to hold on to the rope, because we've got Jen and then you, we're having a very sort of dynamic conversation about the trials and tribulations of city development in Toronto. We've had many guests on this podcast. This is episode 350-something or other. Many guests on here talking about, you know, the challenges we face. And this is a national challenge, of course, the housing crisis we're in. When we pull back the layers and we debate about all the different headwinds that we're facing, and the solutions that could take place, ultimately, more often than not, in fact, on most occasions, the answer is ultimately, city council, and the delays, and the NIMBYism, and the challenges to get zoning changed, the timeframes it takes, and that no amount of GST rebates and CMHC programs and provincial grants can actually solve the problem. It really comes down to, to the city, and the ability for the city to, I don't know, whatever, get out of their own way, get out of our way, make things easier, whatever it may be, and the city councillors, and it really comes down to, unfortunately, at times, you know, because there's an election cycle, and there are electorates that you are beholden to, because you have, you need their votes, that you often may be persuaded to get in the way of development at times, if that serves your purpose for reelection. Now, I'm not sure that's true for you, but I would just blanket city, and this is not even just Toronto. This is true across many municipalities across the country. So, do you want to comment on that? Do you want to pose a question?
Like, since amalgamation, for decades in this city, the path to electoral victory, ticket jurisdiction like Midtown, has been taking an 18-story building and knocking it down to 12. And you're a hero in the community, because those politicians have been rewarded time and time again at the ballot box for saying no. No to new neighbors, no to new housing. And it's ultimately exacerbated the supply challenge that is, you know, gripping municipalities across the country right now, and no exception here in Toronto. And so that's been the model. I think what is changing, you know, and I'll tell you, in 2018, I ran against a former NDP member of parliament that had all the name wreck and the writing and everything, all of the advantages going for him. And his position at the time was like two stories on Danforth, you know, status quo, despite sitting on top of a billion dollars of subway infrastructure in the ground. And that was the prevailing wisdom. And, you know, it's this perverse relationship with the air quotes progressive left, that have actually been the authors of some of the most arbitrary and regressive housing policy in this city over the decades. It often comes from the left. But I think the politics of it is not left or right. It's changing now, because everybody is feeling the acuity of the housing crisis. Whether that is, you know, I've got two young girls, a four-year-old and an 18-month-old. You think about their future and the arc of Toronto, whether or not they're going to be able to live here. I think, being a 1986 model, I think about my friends and my cohorts who, you know, make a little bit of money, so they don't qualify for any of the sort of supportive or affordable housing, but they, but they don't make enough money to live here. So they're leaving. There's a fight for affordability. And then you take about seniors who are overhoused in a community like Beaches East York. A house that used to have six people living in it now has one person, but there's not the supply, there's not the options in the neighborhood for them to downsize and move in and, you know, make that house available for a family. Everybody is touched by the housing crisis, and I think slowly but surely, the politics on that issue are changing. NIMBYism and the tendency for politicians to bend the knee to a loud vocal minority is always going to be there. We still have that. But I think increasingly, day by day, it is almost disqualifying to have an anti-housing position, because the crisis is such that you have to be solutions-focused and find some way to deliver on that. We'll get into the sort of different philosophies about how we do that, but you got to be talking about it. And, and that is very different than when I first ran in 2018.
Well, the city councillors as a whole, I mean, I assume that most of them don't have a background in city planning. Obviously, they do have a hand in housing. How many would share like a like-minded worldview with you on this topic?
I think it would be case-to-case, file-to-file, and that might go back to the sort of, is this in my ward, or is it not in my ward? It's interesting, because again, it does not cut universally left-right in a typical sort of political spectrum. You will have, you know, our Chair of Planning and Housing, Gord Perks, who is among, you know, the most left-wing politicians in the country, who is absolutely opposed to any concept of development charge relief, and has been beating that drum for years. And of course, there's a consequence of that. It puts these projects underwater, and then we don't have any shovels hitting the ground.
Does he, okay, not picking up Gord, but does he know that? Like, does he know that? Like, he must know that, right?
Well, you know what? He kind of found himself in hot water the other week, when, when he sort of said that development charges in the city of Toronto have gone up following the rate of inflation, which of course is just absolutely incorrect, and it's been called out.
We'd be Venezuela if that was the case.
Yeah, so, but the point there, not just to dunk on Gord and...
No, and I'm not...
Well, I do that all the time. So he knows my view on that. But, but then you would also have other councillors that would have a more sort of traditionally conservative perspective, and they would, they would be of the dogmatic mantra, growth pays for growth. And that is the sort of old trope that we've used around development charges, that any new single unit of housing has to offset the costs associated with that. But it's based on the assumption that all of those costs are triggered immediately when somebody takes occupancy, which is hogwash, right? Like, it's the same reason that we're sitting on $3.2 billion of development charges.
I was just going to go to, what are you guys doing with that money?
Yeah, in our reserve account. Well, we're not doing much with it, which is a huge part of the problem, because there's actually $6 billion of costs booked to it, and we have 3.2 billions in the reserve, and that's part of our procurement program. We can't get projects at the door, cost escalation, all of that. But I, I think the point is, it's not a left or right on development charges. There are people on both sides of that that are opposed to any sort of waves, waving and furls of that. But everybody would agree, we have a housing challenge and a supply challenge. And, you know, the first thing, the best thing that local government can do is help reduce some of the costs on the front end, so that these projects are more viable, so we actually have shovels hitting the ground. And that is a big disconnect between my council colleagues, and frankly, the bureaucrats, and the folks who are actually best positioned to mobilize the capital and the talent and build the housing, which is the private sector. And so I think all councillors should probably take a finance course. They should probably have some cursory understanding of how to drive a performer. And the bureaucrats and the city planning staff, by the way, should also understand that. But that is not the case. And I think that's why there's always a disconnect between housing aspirations and housing realities. And, and the gulf in some respects has never been wider.
So, struggling, just, I think my, my mind just got blown a little bit, because, and I, obvious, you know, we sleep, eat, breathe this environment and real estate. And so, the math, we always talk about the math, and we're in financing, right? So like, the math is the math, and that's our loan amounts, and all the interest rates are all driven over the math. It's really quite simple, right? It's just, what are you going to make? Or what are you making? And what are your expenses? Or what will your expenses be? And what's the outcome cash flow? Or what's the outcome, you know, evaluation? And that is the math. And there's a yield target or a yield return, and it's, it's, quite frankly, it's, it's rudimentary. You're surprising me that they don't have that level of knowledge, because it's not. Like, this is, this is a fairly basic concept, right? That you need to have a certain level of income to generate a certain yield, and it's a moderate yield, by the way, right? We're not talking about 30% on their cash. We're talking about 10 or 12% to justify the development. If the DCs don't line up, if the incentives don't line up, then the property's not built. Like, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
I'm going to get cynical on politics here, and I'm sorry for that. But the first thing is, I think a lot of people don't understand. I think a lot of elected leaders don't understand. And that's why advocacy from folks, you know, in the building industry, and all of the adjacent partners associated with that, they need to be involved in that advocacy and that education process. But then the other assumption is that they care. You're assuming they care. And this is where you get cynical on politics. I'm sorry, I've been there six years, like, long enough to see that, you know, the mayor can go out and make an announcement on housing. In fact, she's been fantastic at making announcements on housing, but I would say very poor on actually doing the things that would deliver the housing. And you look at the stats right now, in October, here in the city of Toronto, housing starts are down 81% over last year.
It's because of the math.
It's precisely because of that. But, but you look at what the headline would be on CP24, and it is, you know, "Mayor and Administration Launch a New Program for 20,000 Purpose-Built Rental Units." And so...
They will never get built, because the math doesn't work.
And because it requires $8.3 billion of funding from the feds and the province to unlock it. And so, you know, you can be a politician that is for housing, and you get the headlines, and you get the clicks, and demonstrate yourself as pro-housing, even if in fact, none of that housing is going to, to get built or materialize. And I think that goes back to the electoral cycle. These things are so abstract for people, and most, most folks in Toronto are consumed with like paying the rent, paying the mortgage, putting food on the table, getting the kids to hockey practice. They don't have time to fact-check whether or not those 20,000 units are ever going to materialize.
Permanent announcement six years ago, it could be. By the time the expectation to be built, it's not this next wheat delivery, it's years and years down the road.
So unfortunately, it's like a lot of smoke in the air, it's a lot of bullshit, and politicians are able to skate by on a lack of accountability, because frankly, people are, are consumed with their day-to-day issues. They're busy. You've got press rooms that are gutted on all this sort of stuff, and don't have the resources to do the checks and balances, and will just run the headline of whatever's given to them in a press release. And so we're actually having a very disingenuous conversation about housing. And so, do my colleagues understand the math and the numbers? Not most of them. But the second question is like, do they even care? Not until the electorate and the community starts demanding real accountability and real results, are we going to see politicians respond appropriately with policies that would actually, you know, take paper approvals and make them real with shovels in the ground.
Does the general voter understand, when you're, when you're speaking like this, or maybe in a way it's more communicable to a wider audience, do they, does it resonate with them? Do they understand this? Is it messaging that's effective?
I don't know. Like, I don't know if anyone's giving me communication awards. And I just sort of like, I am the way I am on this stuff. But that's, it comes from this frustrated optimist perspective. You can spin it and sell it and package it in different ways, and I could probably do a better job of that and be more effective. But I, I look at this as the biggest challenge to the city of Toronto and our future prosperity, is making sure that we really move the, the needle on the housing supply challenge. And we're just, there have been some improvements, but we've got a long way to go. And you go back to the statistic from the Toronto Region Board of Trade, 50,000 people have left the city over the past 12 to 24 months, and that is a fight for affordability. They're moving in the, into the GTA, there's inter-provincial migration out to Alberta, or they're going south of the border, you know? And that, that is our time, that is our capital, those are the entrepreneurs, those are young families. And Toronto's future success is really predicated on the notion that if you want to be here to raise a family, to build a business, you can do it. But you can't do it if there's not housing that you can afford. And all of our programs and our policies are so indexed on the, you know, sort of the bottom 10% income percentile. And, and that's important, but that has always been a challenge, and it's always been a question of how many millions of dollars are we going to apply on a per-door subsidy basis? What we're losing the plot on is that middle class, those folks that, you know, make a decent amount of money, but not enough to live here, who are growing our economy, who are starting businesses, who are making investments, who are paying taxes, they're leaving the city of Toronto.
The missing middle.
Yeah, the, the missing middle of people perhaps, not just housing form, but it's still, it still stands to be true. If we can't find a way to, you know, attract those people here to Toronto, our future prosperity and success is at risk.
One of our, one of Adam and my favorite guests is a gentleman named Chris Spoke, who was on, talking about an advocacy group that he had started. I'm not even sure if it's still around. This was a while ago, called Housing Matters. Really what it was, was a YIMBY group. And, and the, the point was, and I think this is, this is, you know, a very topical for, for you in particular, where they would go and they would advocate on behalf of the tenants of that building that doesn't exist yet, because that's ultimately the challenge, right? And you as a councillor, and you could appreciate this, right, where you might have a city planning meeting for whatever the development may be, and a whole bunch of people that live in the neighborhood will come in and argue against it. The 180 units have no representative, the people that will live there in the future aren't there to say, well, wait a minute, what about me and my young children? What about me and my grandparents, or whatever it may be? How do you manage that?
Well, it's important to have diverse views and perspectives in the room, and whether that was, you know, sort of Chris Spoke's coalition, or More Neighbors Toronto that have really taken up that mantra. That's important, and it's helpful. And, you know, less that I think councillors are necessarily going to be swayed by that in a meeting. But I actually think it's more important for the other folks who are on the line or in the room to hear that that perspective exists. Because in the typical planning meeting, that's, you know, seven o'clock on a Wednesday night in a church basement, you get a specific audience that shows up for that. And I can tell you, you know, with my wife and our two kids, like, we, that's not what we're doing. We're dealing with different bedtimes and dinner, and, you know, trying to manage the meltdowns. So we're not at that meeting, but we might like to be. And so when you can, you can have different voices and perspectives, I think that's always important. Some of the changes that the provincial government has made and is making, you know, are clarifying on where these things are going to go. And frankly, it's, they're introducing the types of density and growth and development that is going to be needed to match the demand. I think we can talk about how they've expedited process and provided some clarity. The spirit of what they're trying to do has been very helpful. I would say the execution on some of that has been, you know, leave some things to be desired, and they've had to go back and sort of fix some of it. That's fine. If something's not working, go back and fix it. But that has been a big push, I think, for municipalities across the board, to move things forward with the urgency that is required to expedite the timelines, to have the upzoning of the density, particularly on transit lines. When I go back to that NDP member of parliament who didn't want to see any of that, well, now the province has sort of clarified it for us. So when, when cities like Toronto can't make grown-up decisions to sort of respond to the challenges in front of us, whether that is, you know, development charge regimes, section 37, approval timelines, or bike lanes, there is a government at Queen's Park right now that sees those issues and feels compelled to respond.
So do you feel the provincial level is doing a better job than the, the city level in order to address these issues? Or has there been wins at a city level that you could point to as progress?
There's lots of wins at the city level. And I was the Chair of Planning and Housing for a period of time there, where we stood a housing action plan. And dozens of different things that were meant to deliver the as-of-right reforms, to end exclusionary zoning, to introduce multiplex, to address some of the development charges stuff, to expedite our process, to stand up a new unit within the city of Toronto Development and Growth Division, to expedite things. So many of the, the pain points, that was a reflection of feedback I had heard from the industry, and then putting pen to paper on that to try and move it forward. And despite the change with the new administration, who I have quite, quite different views philosophically on housing and the solutions forward, the good news is, I got a lot of that stuff into the work stream, and it's been coming through a committee anyways, and, and we've been able to approve it. What the province has done, you know, with, with some of the timelines, has given municipalities a kick in the ass to say, no, no, like, we're, we're starting the shot clock. There's a shot clock on these applications, and this is the amount of time it takes to get through this process. It's a one-size-fits-all approach, which is not necessarily helpful in the context of Toronto, because I think it's easy to hate on Toronto, and I grew up in Hamilton, so I can appreciate and understand that. But, you know, some of the applications do have some complexity here that takes a little bit more time. But they, they started the shot clock. The unintended consequence of that was it really just required us to make a decision. And so the easiest decision from the city of Toronto was a no. So then you actually just had more refusals, which is also not helpful. But we worked with the province and sort of responded to that, and found a pathway to continue collaborative working, relationships with developers that wanted to do it. But I, I think it's, you know, we, we have been responding to some things, particularly over the past couple of years. Right now, I'm concerned that we're headed in a direction where the government is going to play more of a leading role on housing in the city of Toronto, which if you talk to anyone, they will tell you that government doesn't do things faster and for less money than the private sector. But that's sort of the ideology that has now come in with the new mayor and the new administration. And I do worry about us spending, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to deliver very little housing, if any, and what, you know, this, this idea of a public builder, which, which effectively could produce the most expensive affordable housing in the country's history.
I guess we think of Metro Links as an example of, of a government-executed project, with limited results. You know, the list, the list would be endless.
Union Station Revitalization.
Yeah.
Like, it...
Big-ticket items.
Yeah, never goes well. It never goes well. And so, right now, we've embraced the idea that we need to build more bureaucracy to build more housing. And again, like, you know, I'm sorry to everyone, it's like, oh, Brad sounds really frustrated about that, but I am, because...
Frustrated optimist, though, right?
But it comes with an opportunity cost, right? You take the same top civil servants, and we had them working on the Development and Growth Division, and expediting our timelines, and working in a collaborative manner with private sector and not-for-profit builders to unlock the thing that we all say we want, which is housing. And now we're big-footing that. We're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole and say, no, 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 like, we're going to be the experts to do that. Of course, the private sector is never going to let us hire those people, right? Because we can't pay them enough. So that means we have to build that, and have those people at the city of Toronto learn on taxpayer time and money. And, and it's all predicated on the idea that we are going to actually take the risk on ourselves. And you guys know this, your financing projects, it's a risky time to be out there. At a time when it's perhaps never been more challenging to do this, we are going to bring the risk in-house, try and build the expertise here, spend taxpayer dollars to, to deliver housing. And I just think that we could get a lot more bang for our buck if we were working in partnership, rather than trying to say, hey, like, hold my beer, we're going to give this a crack.
We're going to build it from the ground up.
Yeah, we had Salima Raji on from Create TIO. I know she's no longer there. We actually have Vip Gupta coming on later, so look out for that episode, too. But we had, during the conversation with, with Salima about...
Vic will probably have some no-fly zones.
Yeah, that understood.
But I'll just say, I like Vic quite a bit.
Salima had a funny sort of moment in her episode where she was talking about, you know, the needs to go to city council and ask for like, you know, what kind of things do we need to be included in this development? And, you know, of course, they wanted to be a ton to afford a build, it needed to be carbon neutral, it had all these requirements. And she's, okay, great. You take all those requests back, and she's, okay, well, this is going to make us negative 20% yield, right, if we do this. And, and her as a, as a, you know, the capitalist, she's from the private side, and she thinks like, like one of, you know, somebody from the private side, saying, this doesn't make any sense. I can't...
You have to pay a developer to take the site.
Yeah, right. Yeah, she was like, you're going to have to pay the developer millions and millions of dollars to buy this site, if this is the way that we have to play the zoning out. So...
And, and these are the, what I call, you know, the poison pills that get passed on the floor of council, entirely political. They seem innocuous. And, you know, I'll find myself in a position where I'm voting against it, because I'm like, well, I actually want the project to go forward. I'd like to see those shovels hit the ground. But you would get a left-wing NDP councillor to say, oh, like, 20% affordable, that's not good enough, 50% affordable. And I always say, well, you know, what's 50% of zero? It's zero. You kill the project. And so then, there's no housing. But these are the poison pills that get slipped in. And it's actually, it's been weaponized now as a NIMBY response, as a way to stop housing, is we will just overburden it with all of these different requirements. That are all things that you want to see. We want to see daycares, we want to see park space, we want to see affordable, all those things. But let's remember, eyes wide open, there's a cost with that. And if the performer cannot bear that cost, if you cannot demonstrate a reasonable rate of return, the bank is not going to finance it, the project's not going to go forward, we're not going to deliver anything. And that is the disconnect.
And that was actually where I wanted to go next, it's just about the, the flavor, the tone, the narrative inside those walls. Because, you know, outside, a lot of us, you know, affordable, good, agree, there's lots of definitions of affordable. We could talk about all of those, you know, those, those affordable definitions. For us, ultimately, I think we just see it's a supply issue. We just need more units. Like, that's all it is. Like, just help us build more units. And I know, okay, well, we don't need a ton of units at $6 per square foot rents, but that certainly helps, because that allows people move out of wherever they're living now and free, free that unit somewhere else. So there is just, the more units, the better. Is that, is there anybody else that believes that inside city council? Do you believe that?
Well, I specifically talk all the time about the supply crisis, the supply challenge. And again, the fact that we have 81% fewer starts in October than we did last year tells you all you need to know. I use the transit analogy. For decades in this city, we did not build transit. What happened? Well, like, now we're F'd, you know, and we're way behind, and we're never going to be able to catch up. We are effectively taking a holiday. We're hitting pause on building housing since, I don't know, 2022, 2023, 2024, maybe 2025. No projects are starting. So, you know, we, we talk about the 25,000, 30,000 units that exist that need to be absorbed. Okay, well, that's going to happen over the next 12, 24, 36 months. What happens when we get to the other side of that, and literally, no projects have started? Well, talk about a housing crisis, a affordability crisis, buckle up, everybody. Like, that's, no one's looking even three years down the road. But it's going to be a big problem from a supply perspective, the fact that nothing is starting right now. And that's why the city of Toronto and my colleagues need to read the room and recognize that, you know, there has to be some give. We have burdened these projects with taxes and fees that are anywhere from 25 to 30% of the total cost of a unit of housing, because no one makes more money on housing than government. And you're seeing jurisdictions that are trying to compete for capital and development, like Vaughan, providing a 25% reduction in DCs. I'm understanding that Mississauga is going to do the same thing. And when Toronto brings forward our version, which, by the way, was a motion I moved last spring, directing staff to come up with an incentive for purpose-built rental, everything looked like we were headed in the right direction, until the mayor's office comes in and says, oh, but we're going to put a requirement of 20% affordable. So, you know, it effectively is dead on arrival unless you have the apartment construction loan program financing that you can stack it with, which is already oversubscribed and over capacity. So there will be some winners on that. Those projects were probably going to move forward already. But we're still left with, I don't know, 18 to 35,000 paper approvals that are going to be stuck on the sideline. And, you know, there were ways that you could do a much broader DC parkland dedication relief, which I was advocating for, and daylight it, you know, put a sunset on that and say, look, like, you got two years to go on this. And if you do, we're going to waive that stuff, because we have a shared policy objective of purpose-built rental. And if you don't, then that's back on after the other side of that. But instead, at a time when you need to reduce your costs to get the financing, to make the project viable, we then add more costs by introducing a 20% affordable. And again, sounds great on paper, but you guys know, when you get into the Excel sheet, kind of breaks the model and doesn't work.
And that's where a lot of these units will live, is in Excel for decades to come. On the immigration front, obviously, Candice is taking a little bit of a pause on, you know, the, the massive numbers of immigrants we've had in the last handful of years. And we'll ignore, you know, the, the pros and cons of, of that concept. But as it relates to housing, in Toronto specifically, we should see more moderate growth levels of our population for, you know, a year or two. And then, as you were referring to, when we hit that wall where nothing's coming on stream, we'll likely be resuming immigration. But in, in the absence of any other kind of, you know, negatives or positives around that, do you think that will help the, the housing affordability, give us a little bit of a slack in the system for, for at least for a minute?
Throw in the students, like, the decrease in students coming, because that also has a major impact. Yeah, they're all renters also.
I think it all kind of helps, but there's not one thing that we can point to. And that's why it all has to be additive, and we have to do all the different things. And that is even just, when you talk about the supply side, the expanding housing options in neighborhoods, an initiative that I was leading on, and we've seen carry through committee and now become policy on, on multiplex and accessory dwelling units, the major streets as-of-right, six stories, the, the new policy... Um, the, the new policy framework around our avenues, changes to the mid-rise design guidelines, which have been so problematic, uh, over the past decade in the city. All of those things help, but none of them are a silver bullet. And, you know, you, again, I go back to our Chair of Planning and Housing. He will stand up and beat his chest and point to any one of these things and say, oh, see, that doesn't do it, it doesn't do it. Well, yeah, but we are so far behind. We have to do all the different things and immigration and student housing, that's all part of it. But I don't think you can point to one specific thing and say, ah, there it is, that's what we need to do. And any politician, elected official, uh, or a person in a leadership position that sort of suggests that is being dishonest. I think that this will help. Obviously, when, when Toronto is absorbing 200, 250,000 people, you know, year over year, that creates a huge challenge for an industry that's only ever managed to, you know, bring 12 to 15,000 units online, right? But I still think even taking a pause on that, we still have a long way to go. And the worst thing that we can do is, is hit pause on construction and hit pause on, on building.
I have a friend in London, Ontario, that, um, works in Toronto a couple of times a week. And he always complains that his house that is, you know, the same value or same size, he pays twice the level of taxes. And so then the logic of the conversation, we're all real estate guys go, well, that's, you know, they can subsidize the property taxes, like individual, single-family property taxes with DCs. And that's the debate that you guys have internally is that if you get rid of DCs, then property taxes go up and nobody, that's, that's sort of a, I don't know what the word is.
The growth is being paid for by existing.
Political suicide in the city of Toronto, whoever suggests that property taxes should go up.
Well, look, I mean, like this mayor ushered in the largest tax increase we've ever seen, nearly 10%. Um, and I don't know, some people are okay with that, but I think it's all predicated on the assumption that, uh, I'm going to see value for money. And now, you know, with that 10% tax increase, uh, you've got record-breaking congestion, um, that's never been worse. You have encampments that have doubled, you have homicides that are up, you have transit that's less reliable. Uh, it, it, it doesn't feel like a safer, more affordable city. The city is more expensive, it's less safe. And so, and then, you know, we have an auditor general report that comes out and shows that the park staff are only in the parks 50% of the time.
Yeah.
That's damning shit. Like, you can't, you can't do that. And so I would rather have a conversation in Toronto about accountability for city services, value for money. And accept that, yeah, there are some people that could pay a little bit more and would be okay with that, but they want to see value. We do benefit from the inertia and the size that we have, like, whatever it is, 850,000 households that, that are paying property tax. And then all of the apartment buildings and the renters who are also paying property taxes. We benefit from some of that inertia and that size and scale. But I think the, the conversation we never want to have is how do we have a culture of performance within the city of Toronto, which is an organisation of 60,000 people with all of our staff and agencies, largest employer in the city? Uh, how do we create a performance culture? How do we deliver better value for money? Can we be everything to all people? Maybe not. Maybe we need to focus on local government and service delivery and do that at a much higher level than, than sort of self-downloading all of these things that we think the province and the feds ought to do, but we're always there to pick up the ball when they won't play. Um, we never do that. We don't control the span of government. And the other thing on the tax thing that I, is always important to point out, because I have this argument with my mom who, who lives in Kitchener. Uh, we pay a double land transfer tax. So the city of Toronto whacks you upfront at a time when you have, uh, when you've never had less money. As you try and cobble together, you're 20% down. We whack you with that double land transfer tax, which is good for 12 to 13 years of property taxes upfront. So London, Ontario, come to me when you're paying, taking a down payment on 12 to 13 years of property tax upfront, and then we can have the conversation.
Aaron's calling his friend as soon as he lives here to have this conversation with him.
No, good, no, this is good. I got another one. Do you have another one?
I, I want to end off on.
Okay, let me go, I got one more.
Yeah, you go.
I think it's interesting.
Yeah, perfect.
And I, my, um, this is another friend of mine who'd be angry at me if I didn't raise this. Um, he, this is a bee in his bonnet about it. Um, city of Toronto is one of the few municipalities in the world that requires two, um, staircases for, for buildings like, like three feet or under.
Who's your friend, Conrad?
No, yeah, no, um, the guy, oh, Dave Morrison, he's head of credit and a former guest on the podcast. Um, and he's been saying like, you know, that square footage loss is massive if you accumulate it across so many different, uh, different developments. Do you have any thoughts or comments on that?
Been leading work on this at the city of Toronto. I've moved motions and directed building staff to work on this. I've got a missing middle roundtable of practitioners, planners, architects, engineers, working quite literally on this. And it's cha, changes that we need at the.
Can you describe it for our listeners, just to make sure that they understand?
Yeah, double staircase.
Double staircase for what, three stories or less or something?
I think it's four stories.
Four stories, okay.
But, but in any case.
But in any municipality, like, like literally every municipality in the world doesn't have this. I, I think there's, I've, I've seen some articles where it's literally, at least North America, we're the only ones that require this.
It's an Ontario building code thing. And so here in the province of Ontario, you are required to have two staircases. And, you know, it's, it's historically been a safety issue. Um, but at the same time, when you think of fire suppression systems, when you think of, uh, materialities that, uh, different materials that don't burn at the same rate as how we used to build housing 100 years ago, we have the same building code. Um, and so while you can provide an alternative engineering solution, that's time and money. And if we want to see more of these multiplexes go, that sort of gentle density in our neighbourhoods, you cannot cede, uh, the GFA, the buildable of a second staircase. And there are, as you pointed out, uh, markets all over the world and the country that have figured this out. Uh, even a fire escape on the outside of the building. Like, there's a lot of different ways that we can deal with this. Um, we just haven't had the direction or the appetite. And you always run up against opposition from fire departments and chiefs that will say, you know, catastrophic outcomes. Um, but again, I, I rely on technology, um, materiality and the fact that there are, there are solutions out there that we ought to be utilizing. So we don't make that decision in Toronto, but I've directed us to do that work. And the province, uh, we've sort of kicked it up to the province with the building code. And, and hopefully we can see some change on that, because it would be a big unlock when it comes to the buildable.
Particularly, I mean, you talk about the threeplexes and fourplexes that are out there.
Kills them.
It kills them. Yeah, so inefficient.
Well, modern fire suppression as well is very different than when these buildings would have been built and required it in decades ago.
So we just need to sort of modernise from a code and regulation perspective.
Like, we are, we're just one at a time, but I wanted to, you kind of, we'll end, we'll end on a high note. You described yourself as, as a frustrated optimist.